Where it's a heat wave and they lost their power. We were sent over folks and notified that they didn't go over to the senior center for cool. Cause it's important that we keep our residents cool and like you can't provide them with the problems. But just briefly, we want to pass this. So the monthly managers report outlines some of these events, but for me specifically there's Go Night, Beginners Dance, Exercise Class, Senior Citizens Club, Computer Room continues to be available for the senior club. And so these are the various activities that are offered at the bank, the Bonnie Baker. And so it's just, it's important that we, you know, when we ask for requests in the budget, it's important to articulate to the public, you know, the importance and why we're doing it. And so basically at the end of the day, the senior center not only houses our seniors, but it also acts as our cooling center. And so that's why in the event where we do have tournaments. Barbara and I are at the end of the day, it's a $12.7 million revenue and 11.39 expenses with a 1.162 in reserves with 1.2.1 going towards street projects. 2.1 million towards street projects. We were able to reduce some expenditures. So we take it over and come in compliance with everything we can. Now we've actually got an actual profit loss being off the list. Really good to have a date with Barbara and myself and then Rick Daniels at the time trying to sort it out and really make sense of what we had. So moving forward, we want to offer a good policy.
I'll put it on the public comment on the budget, the city budget. If no. On council session. Approval resolutions 2024-27-06-11-2024-25-7-8 ACN adopting the proposed budgets for the fiscal year ending in 06 Rio 25. Call for the motion. I'll second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCourtell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Jernigan?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Longley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Approved resolution number 2024-26 adopting a vision, the mission and value statement and 2025 goals for fiscal year 2024 to 2025 identified on exhibit A and direct the city manager to develop action plans for implementation and followed up with mid-year review in January 2025. City managers.
City manager. I'm still down to July 23rd. We've got to get to put together the goals for this year. I've adopted that budget for this year from five, we'll prepare them for the set goals. And we get together, I think, to ensure that we're saving your goals and preventing these goals. It's important to understand that this is past 15th and twice the times. I think it's exciting to give it our stored ability to set some goals which we share with our city. But basically the whole idea is to embrace our charter. Our own private location of our family oriented community. Looking for business, economic growth, looking for the various factors that create this vibrant community. Continue to look for grants to improve our infrastructure and basically provide ourselves as a prime location of our own. It's well committed daily effort. So these are your words, not mine. I wasn't able to. I've taken your words strategically, put them into four various goals. And so basically enhance infrastructure and public spaces, foster economic growth, the business development, community engagement, boundary support. And again, all those various action items are below them, trapping businesses, enhancing public relations. And so the apps such as the rodeo, having scavenger hunts and then strengthening our needles, unique identity, increasing behavior evolved. And then again, the families make sure that we provide enough opportunities for our children. Or provide a home, safe, healthy community. For residents and improved quality of their lives. Now, I did take literally in implementing or adding the value statement that the previous council staff adopted.
Send over folks and notify them that they can go over to the senior center. Uh for uh cool, because it's important that we keep our residents cool and like you can't provide them with the problems. But just briefly, we want to pass this thing on. So the uh the monthly uh manager's report outlines some of these events, but for me specifically, there's. Go night, beginners dance, exercise class, senior citizens club, computer room. Uh continues to be available for the senior club. And so these are the various activities that are offered at the bank, the body bigger. Uh and so it's just uh it's important that we, you know, when we ask for requests in the budget, it's important to articulate to the public. You know, the importance and why we're doing it. And so basically, at the end of the day, the senior center. Uh he houses our seniors, but it also acts as our cooling center. And so that's why in the event where we do have tour lines. Barbara and I are at the end of the day, it's a twelve point seven million dollars revenue. And eleven point three nine expenses with a one point. One six two in reserves with one. Point uh two point one going towards street projects, uh two point one million. For street projects, we were able to reduce some expenditures. Also, the utility, again, the the utility is solid. We're we're in a positive position. With the utility where the revenues are outlasting the revenues from utility at fourteen point five, and then with the expenses from utility are one point three. So again, we're in we're in a position where we are solid for this next fiscal year. And this is the the budget I'm proposing and moving forward for adoption tonight. So our. Budgets that are in front of me tonight, which includes the empty way, the housing authority. And the public utility. Again, the housing, just briefly, when the housing authority came in the in-house. When we took over, we offered uh union wage jobs for those individuals that were there. And not only that, there are. Basically more expenses, we're in the process of rehabilitating. The housing authority, uh there is two hundred thousand dollar loss this next year, which was covered by their reserves. So moving forward, we are getting a BAF program implemented. And so the BAF program will be assist for some of these losses. But at the end of the day, it's almost so much revenue. So we need to be set aside. Those seem controlled if you're to make sure that we're all in or still deserves to be. Clear about that budget. So we we take it over and come in compliance. Of everything we can. Now we've actually got the actual profit loss being off the lack of listening. Uh where do we put that? We have a deal with them, you know, Barbara. And myself and then Rick Daniels at the time, trying to sort it out and really make sense of. What we have. So moving forward, we want to offer good, and then I'll see.
On council session. Okay, approval resolutions twenty twenty four dash twenty seven. Oh six dash eleven dash twenty twenty four dash N two A twenty twenty four. Dash seven dash H A C N adopting the proposed budgets for the fiscal year ending in oh six three oh twenty five. Call for the motion. I'll second. Call for the vote.
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Jernigan?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Longberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Approved resolution number twenty twenty four dash twenty six, adopting a vision. The mission and value statement and twenty twenty five goals for fiscal year twenty twenty four. To twenty twenty five identified on exhibit A and direct the city manager to develop action plans for im- implementation. And followed up with mid-year review in January twenty twenty five. City managers.
City of Florida, there, I'm still dead in July, it's one question. Three, we've got to get to put together the goals for the set of this year. Now we adopted that budget for this year from five, we'll prepare them for the set of goals. And we get together, I think, to ensure that we're saving our goals, implementing uh these goals. It's important to understand, I mean, this is two thousand fifteen. And twice the times, I think it's exciting, giving our stored ability to set some goals, which we share with our city. But basically, the whole idea is to embrace or chart. On a prime location of of our family oriented community. Talking about transparency between families and people with that, through the work. Uh looking for business, economic growth, looking for the various factors that create this. Vibrant community, continue to look for grants to improve our infrastructure and basically. Provide ourselves as the prime location of Colorado, that's well, we can give it out for. So these are your words, not mine. I wasn't able to, uh I I've taken your words strategically, put them in the four various goals. And so basically, enhance infrastructure and public spaces. Foster economic growth, the business development, community engagement, boundary support. And again, all those various action items are below them, trapping businesses, enhancing public relations. And so the app such as the rodeo, having scavenger hunts, and then strengthening our needles, unique identity, increasing behavior evolved. And then again, the families make sure that we provide enough opportunities for our children. Or provide a home, safe, healthy community. For residents and improve quality of their lives. Now, I did take with me in implement or adding the value statement that the previous council staff adopted. Session, but these are values that are foundation are built upon. So honesty, integrity, fairness, teamwork. Respect, excellence, stewardship. So again, these are these are value foundations that the city has adopted over time. And I felt it's important that. We brought them over to extend them. So with that, I I looked at maybe questions that you might have regarding these goals. Also goals set for this next year. Again, as America pointed out, I will get together with my team, we will get together an action plan. Review this mid-year January twenty twenty five to see how we're doing and making sure we're achieving these targets.
Missions for the same. If not, public comments, those. Approved resolution number twenty twenty four, twenty two, six, adopt the addition, admission and value statement. And twenty twenty five goals for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, identified on exhibit A. And direct the city manager to develop action plans for implementation and follow up with mid-year review in January twenty twenty five. Call for the motion.
I'm with the booth.
I'll second. Call for the vote.
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt? Poe? Phil?
Yes.
Longberry? Thank you.
Public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony for or against approval of a proposed November fifth. Twenty twenty four valid measure that would establish an alternative to where old tax on cannabis cultivation within the city. Call for the election and consolidation with San Bernardino County. Argument and impartial analysis. City manager report.
Yes, on November sixth, twenty twelve, the city voters overwhelmingly approved measures S. It was a ten percent growth on receipts of cannabis sales. Prior adoption of measure S, that the tax did not exist. And so the city council proposed that the voters approve measure S. That's what you have in front of you. For a one point one dollar seventy five cent per square foot tax on cannabis, cannib. That being said, this budget is very important for public safety, or parks, or roads, or infrastructure, or senior programs. Again, we utilize revenues as a signal beginning. Free to help improve the quality of lives for our residents. So when thirty six percent of our budget comes out of cannabis, it's important that we get this right. And so the campus revenues have been instrumental in in the city or county. Implemented to contribute both towards its growth and development. And improve these non-cannabis businesses in the Hampton and filter chain. Thousand five hundred dollars. So it's very important that uh we have a proper methodology in place. So the current methodology has proven to be difficult to implement and costly to manage. Particularly with respect to the cultivation facilities. Current tax has proven difficult in the sense that. It's a cash business and we don't really understand. Or excuse me, it gives an opportunity for proprietary. Because when it's a cash business, there's no corresponding date records against the financial audits that normally occur. So the lack of availability of corresponding tax media makes it difficult for us to be able to. Cross-reference. And yes, we do audit these folks and we do spend significant amount of money auditing these folks, but in the in the event where the city council needs to have. What I mean by that is have a square foot tax that helps address some of these issues that might be coming forward with lack of available information. We have something, we have a we have an error that we can use in the event we need it. And so as a result. The city has expressed concerns on the current gross receipts tax. And we have worked together with our financial consultants, city attorney, city staff. Uh the board of three subcommittee of three city council members that are there tonight with you. You can have them speak on it as well. But based on bug information, we have an alternative tax measure that we're proposing in lieu of the current. To the gross receipts tax. There's a process which drives the go over and cycle. And how that gets implemented and what I'd keep by alternatives. But at the end of the day, we're proposing a one point seven five. One dollar seventy five per square foot cultivation area of cannib tax. Which is adjusted annually with CPI, no more than five percent, no less than two, starting with January first of the year. So this provides a square foot tax, not imposed on the facilities unless. It's enacted by the council, though he's going to get that second. So this provides us a tool in the tool shed. An arrow, uh a second arrow in the quiver to develop the tax based on square footage of the cultivation area. Will generate the same amount that the tax speaks generates now those receipts. That's the goal. So with that, John, just going to talk about the processing.
Yes, and we have attending virtually Caitlin in the front office, and she did the lion's share of the work on the ordinance and the resolutions that you had before you this evening. Um but just briefly, in terms of the process, um. Tonight, if the council approves the ordinance and the resolutions placing the uh. The ordinance on the ballot, um then it would go to the voters. And ultimately, voters would decide whether or not to implement that. Or or to approve a dollar seven up to a dollar seventy five per square foot tax. And it's only on cultivation. I want to be clear about that. On cultivation. And it would be in place of, as Patrick was saying, in place of the 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 gross. If the voters approve the ordinance. Then um the council may at a future date take action. On the ordinance to set the rate. The the voters would approve a max of dollar seventy five. You can set it at a at a future date at a lower rate if you want. You have meetings interact with the cannabis industry and decide what rate um setting. You know, whether the council wants to actually implement it in the future, it's totally in the council's discretion. The ordinance states. Cannabis square foot tax shall not be imposed on any cultivation facilities unless and until the council by ordinance. Takes action to set the rate not to exceed the maximum amounts and such. So that would be at some future date after the election, assuming the voters approve. Um. So what you have before you this evening is you have an ordinance that would um. Go to the voters if you if you approve the ordinance and that would set the square foot tax on cannabis cultivation. Um you have also a resolution calling for an election of the mayor and three council members and placing the measure on the ballot. And there's language in the resolution stating what would be on the ballot. And then you also have the resolution consolidating the election with the November fifth statewide election. And then uh lastly, you have a resolution setting priorities for arguments for and against the measure. So that'll be one of the other things you have to do this evening is you, if you so choose, may select somebody on the council. To draft an argument in favor of the ordinance. It can exceed three hundred words. And you can even designate somebody if you choose to uh draft an argument against it. Any questions about the process? Okay, yes.
I just want to say, I'm sorry for the issue, so. This is out there. To put this out there. We're going to have at disposal, if you ever choose to use it, something or not, that we thought about the intention of slipping.
It it would be uh.
When we watch it.
Yeah, so if the voters approved it, if it passed, then it would. It would be a tool that would be available to the council to implement uh the future date if it's so judged. That's that's it. Okay, but see, if the council decided to stay with. The current uh gross receipts tax that's been in place for many years now, you can do it. It is limited weight in, but it'll be a tool that'll be, as Patrick said, available to you should be decided.
Just wanted to be available.
Yeah.
In the event we choose. That's all we need.
That's right. Yes.
Yeah, that it didn't have to be changed. It's just allowing either order be done.
That's correct.
At this point, we only have one, the ten percent tax. This, if the voter approves, we have both to choose from. A dollar seventy five per square foot. However, if it passes, if if we choose to, we can set that at a lower rate. Is there any reason why we didn't put this number higher?
So that now there maybe. Yeah, that we remember the council. So this in in our mind, this isn't a ceiling. That is reasonable. And would put us where we need to be in the event where we're implemented, the city would be built well. This uh financial consultant that did has done. At the end of the day, we want to ensure that. There, that's what it's all about. So at the end of the day, though, this tax needs to be fair and equitable. So we're not imposing a tax that's going to have an impact on businesses staying aligned. Economic development one on one, business expansion and retention. So in the event where you feel very comfortable, where the ceiling. Would put us in a place where if this was implemented. It would put the city in a position that could impact the rest of the businesses. But once you come up with a progressive process. That we will meet at a later date if this is approved by the voters to go. So to answer your question, we we did numerous nows. And so it just so it's clear, it's a dollar seventy five per month. So it's a dollar seventy five per month, which equals twenty one dollars a year. Per square foot. So that would be everybody's own state page. But at the end of the day, we believe that this is a a fair and equitable process that's going to be put in place. And we ensure that to our cannabis industry, because at the end of the day, you don't want folks to go out of business, we want them thriving. Uh and again, this is just an alternative. This isn't something that we keep implementing, or the council needs to implement, folks have, but we do need to have. Uh there's only certain periods of time where eligibility is going to take place. And so it's important that at this point in time, uh based on the councils. Recommendation of looking into this, this is what we put forward. Again, you've got three members of the committee here that were. Uh served on the committee, if they want to talk about it, they can as well, but but uh staff worked with the committee. Uh you know, financial consulting, hiring to get through this process. And so we feel comfortable presenting this to you uh tonight.
That's what I'm saying, if you set it to say two dollars, just get a foot, that doesn't mean we. And it passes, that doesn't mean we have to, since it's two dollars, we just. Be different than big white warrant of dollar eighty tax. And then we'd have the ability to. Assess it higher than a dollar seventy four, if the conditions stay the same.
Well, that's why we put in the CPI increase, so it will actually estimate. And so what would just stay in that. Based on the input that we get from the cannabis industry. And the analysis that we do financially with where we're currently at, is that simple, it's good at least we're currently at. Uh with the revenues, because we want to keep this in business. And so the CPI increase would allow an adjustment to take place. In January, maybe.
Haven't seen anybody raise their hand. Make sure there's nobody either remotely or in the brain that wants to speak during public hearing. If if you do want to speak, raise your hand. But there's apparently no public comment, so you can press.
I think, and it's part of remember, they still pay state tax and the parasity tax. So the goal is not to close down businesses here. You don't want that that to be thought at all. Just down the taxes in city and if these taxes in state.
Okay, first meeting, or this number six six five, I want to sign it. I want to reiterate what Tana just said, that um. This decision can only be made in an election, a presidential election year. So if we don't make this decision and get it on the ballot and get it approved right now, we have to wait four years before we can address this again. If if we ever choose to use this. Uh and one of the things uh in the discussion was that. There are regulatory pressures outside of the city that control um cannabis and impacts banking, electronic transactions. There's a lot of regulations, there's a lot of things to watch for, a lot of things to be accounted for. And it's very difficult to be accurate all the way around. So everyone's doing the best that we can with what we can do with. Making sure everything works. But in the future, if we run into problems where we don't feel we can regulate it at the rate we're doing it now. We have this other choice that we can implement. And the cannabis industry will know that we have this other choice that we can submit only if we ask it. That we're, that's not our, that's not what we're planning to do at this moment. We just want it available. Because we don't want to wait four years to ask for the availability there. So it's important that we do it now.
Again, it's the it's two years. It would have, it's it's not the presidential election, it's when council election that you have tax measures on the election.
Thinking of the corrections.
So what I'm asking you, the council, to do, because there's four actions that need to take place. And so I'd like to. First vote on the ordinance, and then we can introduce number two and three. And then we need to identify somebody that we'd like to speak for. And then if you'd like to have somebody from the community speak against uh the measure, basically, the the resolution, that's. Argue against. And so I keep the council to pick one of you up there to identify who's going to be the fourth. That's what our recommendation will be. And so with that, uh we uh recommend. I'd like to take a break for a few minutes.
To, for the public to comment on stats or to go with the general.
Yeah, she said, is there any more public comment?
We're in this number six-six-five-ac in the ordinance of the city of Nieves, California. An article by, by Cannabis Cultivation Square Foot Tax, Chapter Twenty of the Neils Municipal Code, established in an alternative, alternative square foot tax on cannabis cultivation, subject to voter approval. Moved away reading and adopt the Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Four dash Twenty Eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Nieves, California. Calling for and giving notice of the holding of a general municipal election to be held on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, for the election of certain officers as required by the provisions of the charter, and for the submission of a proposed measure that would establish an alternative square foot tax on cannabis cultivation. Moved away reading and adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Four dash Twenty Nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Nieves, California, requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County Samaritanino to consolidate a general municipal election to be held on November twen- on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, with the statewide general election to be held on the date pursuant to session ten four oh three of the Elections Code. Moved away the reading and adopt Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash Thirty, a resolution of the City Council of Nieves, California, setting priorities on filing written arguments regarding a city measure and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis.
Okay, we can start with the ordinance first.
Motion on the ordinance.
Make the motion to agree.
And second. Second. Uh, call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
McCorkle.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Poe.
Yes.
Spelt.
Yes.
Longbreak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you have a good pass, that we can pass the number two we agreed, the same thing?
And call for the motion on two and three.
I second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
McCorkle.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Poe.
Yes.
Spelt.
Yes.
Longbreak.
Yes. Okay, I just think about this, including Resolution Twenty Twenty Four and Twenty Eight and Twenty Twenty Four, Twenty Thirty.
And then finally, we need, uh, so basically, what we need to do is get a discussion. Uh, and a first and a second for appointing somebody to be in the for argument. And then, again, we will, once you identify who that individual is, you vote on the resolution as a whole. Uh, Councilmember Longbreak. And to understand who's going to be the individual, uh, let's, let's vote on it as a whole.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
McCorkle.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
So, yes, Spelt. Longbreak.
Yeah.
All right, now, just to be safe, let's, let's vote on Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Four dash Thirty, with the mayor as a representative as the for.
Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash Thirty, a resolution of the City Council of Nieves, California, setting priorities for filing a written argument regarding a city measure and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. And having, uh, Mayor Jan attorney can, uh, read the for, uh, this issue.
Speak later, but we just did was, we needed a month, first and a second for you to appoint somebody to be the representative on that resolution. And now, what we're doing is voting for the Resolution Twenty Twenty Four to file a petition for written arguments. And so, basically, you appointed the individual now, but now, we're going to vote on the resolution, so.
Is there a first and a second?
Yes, for Mayor Turnigan to be the individual that's going to write the, the, uh, the, in.
Okay, Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
McCorkle.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Poe.
Yes.
Spelt.
Yes.
Longbreak.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask a question, though. Now, if we have the person that's writing the arguments for this resolution, then anyone from the public, we just, does it get put up?
Yes, we notify the public that they're able to provide comments, uh, for the against or not in favor of the, uh, last time, uh, this year, we had a member of the utility board provide that input. So, we will reach out to the community and see who would like to volunteer themselves for the against. One, one written argument against.
You're, you're done.
There is a time, John. There is some time limit for the against. Is there a time limit on this? It's not part of the resolution, it's not part of the.
Is, is the question whether there's time limit for somebody to write in opposition to it? Under the government code, um, you have the right to designate somebody in the council to write in favor of it. We needed to also designate somebody to write in opposition, designate somebody to write in favor of it, remember, somebody that's qualified to vote on the measure in the community to write and oppose it.
Thank you.
As per change to the N B A Council's items. As we give it time limit per person has been stepped, N B A Council, we set the change order matter final to the amount of fifteen thousand twenty dollars. There's a contract amount of one million five, five thousand forty nineteen thousand moving work between the five units, S S of the, for the water service lateral replacement project authorized staff to execute said change order and accept the notice of completion for the work. City manager.
Yes, Mayor, we're bouncing in front of you, we have the acceptance work of one, then a list of completion. This is big for our communities, this means once the underlying water service levels are placed, this will come next. We get roads, fresh pavement, so we're excited about that. So, we got onto bid, and, uh, we've already authorized that bid here at the council. Now, we're going to perform some fresh pavement. So, the, the long story, uh, sorry, let's go with the short story. Short story is basically the increased budget cost by thirty-five thousand dollars. So, it's a savings to the residents of our community by thirty-five thousand. We were able to do that by the leadership of the city staff that we had by backing and the guidance of the council back in December. We split up the bids. Yes, I appreciate your patience of moving this forward, it's been working with us to get this done, it did take a little bit longer, but at the end of the day, we did save money for ourselves. So, I'm very thankful for your guys' trust in our team to be able to execute this, but we're just very, uh, proud, uh, of the savings. And if we are done with the water service lateral project, that we'd be moving forward with the payment.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
McCorkle.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Poe.
Yes.
Spelt.
Yes.
Longbreak.
Yes.
Thank you.
The turn is made, this N B A H A C and the, and we took the H A C meeting, roll call was being discussed, the public cost statement to the council items. As we give it time limit per person has been scheduled. Council consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be retained and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor, each member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to the council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person has applies. Recommended action, approve items seven through eight on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote. Approve the warrants registered through June eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and approve the minutes of May twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four.
Call for the motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Ca- Campbell.
Yes.
McCorkle.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Poe.
Yes.
Spelt.
Yes.
Longbreak.
Yes.
Thank you.
End of the consent counter. Regular council items, update to the emergency declaration resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash seven, local emergency due to the closure of only, the only California pharmacy with Nieves, information, city manager.
Yes, Mayor, the council, we already totally forward the city council, office of this to Twenty Twenty Four dash Seven, the superior local emergency to closure of only pharmacy here in California decided. So, there has been some progress, it's still, at the end of the day, you don't have pharmacy here in town. I'd like to extend this resolution, because at the end of the day, for residents that don't have access to transit, that will have a harder time of getting there, the prescriptions. And so, at the end of the day, we have added, added three more businesses, Walmart Pharmacy, both the Walmarts on the other side of the river, Laughlin Pharmacy and Wallace Center. So, now, we went from one pharmacy that had Medi-Cal, which is about thirty-two hundred residents in our community, that are qualified for Medi-Cal. And so, now, we have seven. So, we have seven pharmacies that are able to provide, uh, their pharmaceutical needs to, to the residents who are needing that are on Medi-Cal. So, again, this is in the event where pharmacy wants to forward, we have been in talks, uh, with one, actually, two pharmacies in town. And so, this will help us cut through the rectum, the bureaucracy of how we're going to be those pharmacies.
Western and Osprey's Commission Center on September twenty-third through twenty-five, twenty twenty-four. City manager.
Yes, that Mayor Robinson Thompson, the I C S C Western event has moved from, uh, San Diego to Palm Springs, which is a bit closer. The event is on the day of the council meeting. And so, in the event where we don't have the forum, we will need to counsel that council meeting. But, in the day, I need at least three of you to, uh, put your hat in the ring. Again, this is a smaller conference, uh, the I C S C offers, it's a smaller group that only has the Southern California, uh, retail businesses. So, we need to be able to move forward and put our spots in, because the advance rate was going to expire.
I would like to attend it also.
Counselors that want to go, and so, if any of the counselors, uh, want to attend, please raise your hands, of course. Both of you, don't look, you need a first and a second. Correct, what the council needs, all of that on the next agenda, we'll have where. Again, I see, it's important for us, you know, to be present, to, to, to be retailers. It, it is challenging that, that, you know, we, the, the demographics are challenging for the, at the end of the day, knowing that we're part of this, to, to, to have a story together, we need these folks. So, okay, so, who are the folks that would like to go? We'll talk to the mayor, the mayor, so the mayor's been identified, wants to go, first and a second. Ellen Campbell, Jamie McCorkle. And Mayor. Uh, four folks that want to go, that, that does create a forum for them. So, maybe, I mean, again, it's up to the council, we'll go that route, you can, you can also, uh, put your, you know, provide, uh, that's, we need to go up for it, it's up to the council.
I'll, I'll step out, I'll step in that. Thank you, California, you said it's long enough.
Hey, so who are the three that want to go, dogs? So, we've got McCorkle, Henry, we've got the mayor.
Yes.
McCorkle.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Poe.
Yes.
Yes.
Longbreak.
Yes.
And designate a vote, delegate and alternate. And I would like to attend this one, too.
So, again, same process, I need, uh, you know, hopefully, it's your lessons, and you're going to, for all. So, we need a first and second, ladies and the officers that would like to go, so. So, we've got Ellen, Henry. Yeah, the league's, so, city managers, and, yeah, I will go with the counselors as part of the, the panel conference, it gives us an opportunity to hear, to hear various managers and other counselors. Luckily, this goes from north to south, this was last year, it was Sacramento, the sites of doggies, the bulls, and all state police, and the various cities throughout the state, so, yes, that would be.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
McCorkle.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Poe.
Yes.
Spelt.
Yes.
Longbreak.
Yes.
So, so, so the voting, okay, so we know who's going. Okay, so we voted on that. Now, the next step is the voting, delegate, and alternates. So, basically, we need, uh, a, a series of, you know, who's, who's going to be the delegate, the, the, the delegate. And so, in the years past, it has been the mayor that has been the delegate to the conferences. Of, of those three, now, you've got Ellen, Janet, and.
And this is just for the vote and the other one, the delegate. Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
McCorkle.
Yes.
Merritt.
Merritt?
Yes.
Um, she's a Spelt. Longbrake.
I'd like to nominate Ellen. The alternate.
That girl. Councilmember Campbell? And McCorkle? Yes. Merritt?
Yes.
Pogue? Yes, Spelt? Longbrake?
Yes, some of the items that we've been working on recently include, um, working on cannabis tax ordinance and resolutions that were before you this evening. And working close with the city council and the city managers and the city on them. Uh. Other items include, uh, continue working with staff to enforce the voter approved cannabis taxes currently in place. Uh, we also continue to represent the city and work with staff on code enforcement matters. Uh, we are assisting the city or continue to assist the city with public record, public contracting matters. Uh, supporting with the city clerk on public records act requests as needed. Representing the city, uh, with the needles housing authority. And then as needed advising the city on Brown Act of conflict issues. Advising and representing the city in connection with employment matters. And then also, I've continued assisting staff with review of applications for individuals who wish to work in cannabis industry in the city of Beagles. And then lastly, assisting the city on those things.
Uh, we're putting together the nomination papers for the general election coming up. The nomination package will be available to the lives this team. Not before. So if you'd like, it's maybe the first time the city clerk's. First time, it's my ticket. Uh, they're still assisting, uh, general penetration, there's voice. And then identifying documents about people on H H, departments, people that are things. And we're also working on, seeing that's involved, a lot of stuff involved, if you don't. It's not fault worthy. So, um. We just had to find a place to house it. So it's a little bit cool. Uh, responding to, um, put quite a few records requests, um, like I said, dialogue. That's what I said, when you speak to us. Um, processing claims for insurance, the J C I A, one which does require internal involvement. Uh, assisting council, which now might turn. Uh, still. Of course, that's something classic, which is how this condition. And fourteen, I'm seven, two. Two, six, seven.
Yeah, hi, me, uh, this, um. So, no, I want to thank everybody's patience today. We are, and sword building over a hundred and sixteen years old. So again, this is a new area for us. It's very nice to, um, be in this and not be a hundred and twenty degree. That the current council chambers is in. So I want to thank my team, Dan, Kat, Jessica and Ray. For getting this to the others, uh, it's, yeah, it really, yeah. It's been, it's been a long term, uh, again. Again, a lot goes into this. We just want to leave our minds. There are some growing things, so we'll work on those things. Uh, but, but again, uh, this is going to be our home for the next. At least a year. And so it's going to be our home for a period of time. So basically, there's a ribbon cutting coming up on June twenty first, twenty twenty four, at nine AM. At Bob Bell's Beach Park, formerly First Beach. So I'd like to, it's in the paper tomorrow. So it'd be great to have you all come out and support, um, you know, our, our ribbon cuttings. Again, these are, these are projects that were grant funded. No taxpayer, dollar, well, it's up there. Uh, there was a portion, a small percentage, like one percent that was paid for as a, as a change of plans. Uh, but at the end of the day, it was fully funded by the state California Clean California Grant. So we're really excited about that. So come on and help to support the city council. Uh, the cannabis labs is having a grand, uh, excuse me, grand opening or re-cutting. Uh, it's gonna be, uh, next Monday at twelve thirty. We'll get that information out to the council, but you're all invited to attend. It's a testing lab. In the community, it's a, it's a. The I A N State, you know, since. Heard in an article earlier, I wouldn't consider that to everybody, it'd be hard to manage. From the League of Cities, we received a station for our pro housing designation. So I was very proud of the work that we've been able to hear in the city of Beagles. You know, we're one of three jurisdictions that have decided to go pro housing. And so we're, uh, you know, we're making waves. People are, we're taking the initiative, kicking butt. So with that, I want to, we could turn off the lights and I wanted to play a video, a little bit more. And, uh, supervising rounds, sending and conveying for investing in our, our community. Again, uh, a community that is. And services are few to, to say, when you think we're.
Uh, thank you. So, uh, oh, I just wanted to say that we, we all went to the, the opening of the new bridge, to, uh, to the crossing. So we were invited. Um, by both the city law, I used to come up to live, and we granted of new, the new bridge. And it was phenomenal. It was just amazing. And we, we were able to all go. President had to work, she's not to join this. So, yeah, everyone in her office was with us. She had to be there. We're sorry. But, um, it, it was so nice. They had a party with us. They brought us up there. They had snow cones, they had three pink donuts. Um, they gave us these little packages, these little bags. And I saw her look on our necks and it dropped dead. Standing on the cement bridge in Biddler River, on the boat, the river not being touched, the water. And we have represented from, from Vena, we have Senator from Arizona. And the local city staff, and it was really, really messy. And it was nice to have our cities together like that, and to participate in a joint, um, gathering like that. So I appreciate that we got to be there and we have.